Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the September 12th meeting of the Capitola City Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Mayor Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here.
Thank you.
And we will note, for those who are wondering, that Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Clark are absent this evening. We will move on now to our Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Staff has no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay. With that, we're going to move on to our presentations. And our first presentation is exciting. It's a mayor's proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of the construction of the Venetian Court, which is an exciting milestone. It is older than the city is itself. The city is only 75 years, so this is really exciting. And I'll share some of the information. Whereas envisioned as the second Venice, the Venetian Court residences typify a seaside resort adjoining the golden sands and gem-blue seas, relishing the songs of waves and salty air. The property was purchased upon which the Venetians' courts stand in 1919 and filed the subdivision in 1924. The Venetian Court includes private residences and a hotel and has been a landmark in Capitola since its inception. And in 1987, the unique history and design of the Venetian Court was recognized as a historic district on the National Register of Historic Places. While the famous vivid multicolored exteriors were not part of the original architectural design, the Butcher family was inspired to paint their unit pink in the early 1960s after seeing colorfully painted houses during a European trip, and the neighbors soon followed suit. Whereas, to this day, the Venetian Court owners diligently maintain the historical character, safety and security, and structural integrity of their homes, walks and seawall through both winter storms and summer crowds, so that visitors to Capitola Beach can continue to appreciate the Venetian Court for the next 100 years. Now, therefore, I, Kristin Brown, Mayor of the City of Capitola, do hereby proclaim 2024 as the 100th anniversary of the construction of the Capitola Venetian Court and commend its iconic seaside beauty. Very exciting. I think that deserves a round of applause. Do we have someone here to receive the proclamation? All right. Come on up.
Well, thank you to the entire council for this recognition of the Venetians on its 100th anniversary. My name is Mike Gartner. I'm fortunate that we're one of the families that is a current homeowner there. And I'm happy and honored, of course, to be the person accepting the proclamation, but I do need to recognize a few groups of people who've been instrumental in the Venetians over their lifetime. You've alluded to some of them already. Of course, the visionaries more than 100 years ago, who saw the value of a project like this, you know, to complement a charming seaside village and beach, and then to see that project to its fruition. The homeowners and the city officials over the decades who have protected and supported the Venetians to make sure that that magic is kept alive. Of course, the thousands and thousands of visitors who have come and stayed, and not just stayed, but used the Venetian as a jumping off point to discover and explore all the great things about the beach and the village and the wonderful people and the surrounding area. In fact, that's how it started for our family. Almost 50 years ago, when my parents first brought me and my siblings down, and we stayed for a weekend the first couple of years in the Venetian, and that became a week, and then two weeks, and then a month. And then eventually, one of the units came up for sale, and my mom was lucky enough to be able to buy that. And we've enjoyed it, our family, ever since, but we've also really enjoyed giving other families the opportunity to discover and enjoy and fall in love with Capitola and the Venetians the same way we have. I should probably recognize a few thousand photographers. I'm under the impression there's been a few photos taken of these places over the years, and I'm sure that has not hurt its reputation. And last but not least, the current homeowners association and all the property owners. We, of course, are honored and very proud to be just the current caretakers of such an iconic symbol of Capitola. And, as you alluded to, doing everything we can to make sure that they're around for many future generations. So thank you again for this proclamation for the Venetians on its 100th anniversary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know pretty much anytime I talk to someone from out of town and tell them that I live in Capitola, they almost always tell me, "Oh, with the colorful houses?" I go, "Yes, the place with the colorful houses." And it's the Venetians they're referring to every time. Sure?
Good timing. I'm Deborah Ostberg, the museum curator here in Capitola. And I'd like to just mention that I've been doing, rotating exhibits about the Venetian Court's history at the Capitola Library. There's one up there right now about a gentleman who wrote a book while living there. So the other thing, too, is that we have an exhibit about the Venetian Court in the Capitola Mall right now as well, and, of course, also in the museum. So I just wanted to let you know. And one other thing that's kind of pertinent to this room is the other day I had a couple folks, Mr. Silva and his wife came out from the Central Valley. The gentleman's uncle was Mr. John Kerr, who did the painting behind you and this painting over here. And so the family got pictures, you know, with the painting, so that was really cool. And they also told the rest of their relatives to watch the city council meetings so they could also see the paintings of their family.
That's exciting. Well, Deborah, you'll have to find a way to connect me with Mr. Kerr because rumor has it that one of these paintings came out of my grandparents', great-grandparents' copy shop in Capitola Village back in the 60s, and that the owner, or the person who painted it gave it to my great-grandparents, and it ended up here in City Hall. So I would love to find out which one it is and if that's actually true or if it's just family folklore. All right. Okay, we're going to move on to Presentations 3B, Introduction to Police Officer Eric Estrada. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm here this evening to introduce our newest member of the police department. I have here Eric Estrada. Eric is, just recently got hired with us. He's currently on training with Corporal Vasquez back here. Eric is married and he has five kids. He lives here in Santa Cruz County. He enjoys spending time with his family. He enjoys watching sports, reading, playing guitar, and he's also very avid in the gym. Some of the things, his previous experiences include being a personal trainer, a bus driver for the metro, and then more recently worked for the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Department as a correctional officer. And so he's worked in the jail for the last couple of years and is now making the transition out on the street. He's picked the Capitola Police Department, so we're happy to have him. And with that, I'll leave it to Eric, but we're really happy to have him on board. And that brings us up to, again, to full staffing, so we're really excited about that. Here's Eric.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just want to say thank you for coming here today. I want to say thank you for allowing me to be a part of this city. You know, like the chief said, I drove the bus for almost eight years, so I got to know the city very well and the people in it. So when I saw this opportunity to come and work here, I mean, it was a very easy choice for me. I'm big on family values, and that's why I chose it, because that's exactly what the city and this police department feels like. So I really look forward to seeing all of you out there, and everybody here as well. So if you see me, please say hello. I really want to get to know everybody around here. So again, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome. We're excited to have you with us. Okay, we're going to go to Item 4, Additional Materials. Looks like we have more correspondence that was received?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So yes, we had correspondence received regarding Item 7C, two for Item 7D, and another for Item 8B. Thank you. Also, all presentations this evening were uploaded and are included in the Agenda Packet Online.
Great, thank you. We will now move on to oral communications from members of the public. This is time for members of the public to address the council on any item that is on our consent agenda this evening or not on our agenda at all this evening. And if you would like to speak, please approach the podium, state your name if you'd like it included in the minutes, and welcome.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Ling, and I'm here as a concerned citizen about Hill Street, especially about the part of the road next to the sports club. The water's going up, it's bending to the right, and lots of cars are cutting into the bike lane. The white line has almost disappeared, and maybe we need permanent cones there because we want to keep the pedestrians and the cyclists safe. I have seen children going downhill. I'm not kidding.
Ms., if you don't mind just moving the microphone closer.
I'm sorry.
So we can hear you. Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Okay. I've seen children going downhill on the wrong side of the road with their e-bike or with their regular bike. And suppose that a car would have been coming, you know, somebody's going to lose them, lose his life. So I really would like to see cones there so that, you know, that everybody is safe and that the cars won't go into that area where the bike should be. And then, since the white line is all gone on Hill Street, make it all the way up because, you know, we have to walk on the street and still people park in the bike lane. They park there. So that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm getting better on this, you know.
Thank you so much for your comments. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Goran Klobic. I'm a Swiss Army Veteran. That means Swiss Army Veteran. Yesterday, I was honored to participate in a memorial for 9/11 victims in Optos with first responders and police deputies there. I don't know, maybe not everybody is aware about that, or maybe they are, but happened on 9/11 back in 2001, 4,000 people around lost their lives in New York when airplanes hit targets which were kidnapped by Al Qaeda terrorist group. That's all I want to say. And something else, I don't think it's a good idea that there are efforts to legalize marijuana. Thank you very much for listening. Goodbye.
Thank you, Goran. Hi, welcome.
Vaccines for Health or Profit, compiled by Brandy Vaughn, LearnTheRisk.org. And here's another book on vaccines, The Unfortunate Truth About Vaccines: Exposing Vaccine Orthodoxy by Leon Kanarad. You know, in a democracy, we're supposed to be able to critique, hear different points of view, different sources of information, challenge, question authority, but with this issue of vaccines, it's like such censorship. And a little more on censorship from the book The Unfortunate Truth About Vaccines. Here's some unfortunate truth. The following chart by Learn the Risk, that's in that book I held up, reflects the explosion in mandated vaccines over approximately the past 50 years. There has been more than a 14-fold increase in the number of vaccines injected into children today compared to 1962. All of these vaccines contain a multitude of toxins, including aluminum, mercury, and formaldehyde, which have overloaded children to such an extent that it has caused detrimental consequences based on numerous scientific studies linking vaccines to autism, autoimmune disease, allergies, asthma, seizures, brain damage, miscarriages, infant death syndrome, SIDS, and more. Unfortunately, the medical establishment and the mainstream media, backed by the pharmaceutical industry, have conveniently avoided any serious discussion of the research that shows the downside of vaccinations. What we are left with is the failure of the U.S. government and related institutions to protect children who are the most vulnerable recipients of these vaccines. This is a book censored by Bookshop Santa Cruz, who would not have the author, local author, speak. And there is a protest of the censorship and ban books when they say, "Read banned books." This is one of the ones that's banned. It's in front of Bookshop Santa Cruz on Pacific Sunday, 1 to 3 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council, and we will go to staff and city council comments. We'll start with staff. Any comments this evening?
I don't think I have any.
Okay.
Maybe something will come to mind.
Well, no pressure. It's not required. Council comments.
Yeah, I have a comment. I just want to remind everybody that this weekend is the annual Art and Wine Festival put on by the Chamber of Commerce. So it'll be Saturday and Sunday. Saturday, it's 10 to 6. Sunday, it's 10 to 5. I think they are still looking for some volunteers, so if anybody is interested, I would get in touch with the chambers. I think checking IDs and pouring or bottle sales. So come on out and have fun.
Tomorrow is our last Food Truck Friday at Monterey Park. So it starts at 4 and now, I think, 8 o'clock. Usually 7, 7:30, 8 o'clock. So, what, 7? 7:30. That was close. So tomorrow's the last one. I look forward to seeing all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have two quick comments. The first is I had the opportunity last week to go visit some of the participants of our after-school program, our rec, through our rec department, and that was really exciting. I was excited. I was talking to the participants about our Mayor for a Day essay contest, which that's still open, right? It hasn't closed yet? Oh, yeah, great. So students who are interested in participating in the essay contest can tell us about what they would do if they were mayor for the city, and the winner of the essay contest gets to come up here, and I will vacate my seat, and they will be mayor and get to read their essay to us. So I encourage, if you have any students in your life, to encourage them to participate. The students that I spoke with had some really exciting ideas for our city, mostly based around getting an in-and-out and how long school days should be, but also, they had actually, they also had some really good ideas, though. They mentioned that we should have sidewalks throughout our entire city and that we should have more beach cleanups, and I thought that those were really smart ideas that we should consider as a city. The other thing I want to share is that on September 25th, the long-awaited grand opening of the Wharf, we're really excited. There's going to be speeches and food and fun and celebration, and it has been a long time coming since we have all been able to come together as a community on our beloved Capitola Wharf, and so I hope to see you all there. It starts at 2 PM on September 25th. See you there. Okay. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Is there any member of the council that would like to move an item from consent? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda, Item 7A through D.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We will move on now to Item 8A, Capitola Wharf Long-Term Use and Development Plan, speaking of the Wharf.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Before you tonight, I'm going to be presenting the Capitola Wharf Long-Term Plan Contract. So here we are. Next slide, please. So our recommended action tonight is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Fuse Architecture for outreach, planning, and design services for the long-term use and development plan for the Capitola Wharf in the amount not to exceed $75,000, subject to city attorney review and approval. Next slide. So background, I think we're all very familiar with the background to the Wharf. It's been a major focus for our city over the last three years. In 2022, we started, we initiated the widening and replacing of the pilings, the deck, and adding restroom facilities, that project for resiliency. And unfortunately, in December of 2023, due to a large, the storm damage, additional damage was made to the Wharf mid-construction, which caused us to have to remove the buildings on site. And then, as just announced, on September 25th, we're going to be having a celebration on the Wharf, the reopening. The temporary use plan is now in effect, and that Boat and Bait is operating on the Wharf currently. And we've also, there's two special events. One is on September 25th, the grand reopening, and then there's also a concert, and I think Food Truck's planned for October 6th. When we brought the temporary use plan to city council earlier in the year, we were directed, "Let's plan for 2024, and we'll revisit this early in 2025 to figure out what we're going to do for the temporary plan in 2025." So that's where we are today. In terms of the contract that you'll be reviewing tonight, the RFP was issued in May of 2024. The selected consultant was Fuse Architecture, and they're partnering with Moffett Nickel, who have worked on the Wharf before. They have a great understanding of the structural needs for the Wharf and any future development there. And then Fuse Architecture is a great architecture group that's locally based in Capitola. The scope of the contract is outreach, planning, and design for future uses and structures on the Wharf. Next slide, please. So the steps in this, a little bit later, Chloe will be presenting the strategic plan. And during the strategic plan effort, which is separate from this contract, we're going to have specific questions to the public about the long-term use and structures on the Wharf. So rather than just tire out our community with too many surveys, we're blending that effort to get feedback, especially this, they're really, within this strategic plan, they're very talented in getting feedback, and we thought, "Let's keep it to one survey." So next, and then within the Capitola Wharf Long-Term Plan, we'll have, so we'll get that initial feedback, we'll give it to Fuse, and then from there, they'll put together an alternative analysis report, and that will come to the city council in February. Then we'll have, we'll give that to the city council to provide feedback if they want any changes to the options that Fuse brings forward. Based on that, if okayed by the city council, we'll put it out to public outreach on the alternatives, and then we'll return to the city council in April to hear what the outcome of the public outreach was and get direction in that third step from city council on which item, and there'll be a recommendation, should be the final long-term development plan. So then they'll, from April until June, they'll work out the final details of that final long-term development plan, and we'll present that to you in June, early summer of next year. So five alternatives. Within the contract, there's a requirement that, Fuse is going to put together five alternatives. The first is for open space. The second is the current use option with having Boat and Bait, and to have fishing out on the Wharf in structures, as well as the possibility of temporary events. The third option would be mobile structures. The fourth is small structures, and then the fifth is permanent larger structures. Within each alternative, Fuse is going to put together a site plan and renderings, cost estimates, and then an overview of what the permitting is. I do have some slides that I'm going to show you next, and I just want to make it clear that these are not specific proposals. These are examples to really show you the types of structures we're going to be asking Fuse to consider when they put together these renderings. But these are examples from other places. It will not be, they'll have authentic designs that come forward out of this proposal that are more reflective of Capitola. So it's just a helpful way to understand what the five alternatives are. So I'll quickly go through these. The first is an open space proposal, and it's the project that went before Planning Commission and was approved, just the open space of the Wharf with benches and tables, bathroom out there, but not much else going on. So next. Next is the current use option, where we have fishing and events out on the Wharf. Third is mobile structure option, and that's just structures that can be moved on and off the Wharf, so if there was a storm, they could be moved off or, yeah. Next is the small structures, small all-weather structure option, and those are just smaller structures, a little, still in the less expensive side, but they would not be able to be wheeled off the Wharf if there was an event. Next. And lastly, permanent structure option, and this is examples of what was there before and just structures on other Wharfs that are permanent. So public outreach is quite a bit of public outreach. So first, there'll be the, within the strategic planning, the initial outreach to get opinions and of what people would like to see or how they'd like to use the Wharf in the future. We'll have, within this contract, community meetings, one in person and one virtual, once there's, the five options are designed, and then a public survey to get feedback on the five alternatives, and we'll make sure to have that survey available for at least three Council presentations, I've mentioned this, but we'll have the first presentation in February of 2025, so you can see what Fuse has put together in terms of alternatives. And then in, if you give your blessing for us to put that out for public review, we'll then come back in April to present the findings of the public outreach, and then in June, and at that April meeting, we'll be looking for direction on choosing the final option, and then in June, we'll present that final long-term plan. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks, Katie. So when I'm looking over this particular contract, I'm thinking about, like, council input, and so in February, I'm just wondering, before it comes to us, when each of those projects are budgeted, I'm just thinking about budget feasibility and how that's going to tie into what's presented to us for our budget goal, you know, when we set our goals. So I'm just wondering if those are conversations you're going to have with Fuse in terms of, like, realistic, you know, things that we can really do when all five projects are presented, because I could just imagine something that costs $30 million could cross the dais. So I'm just curious about what staff is doing to work with Fuse in aligning that for us.
Yeah, you know, in our conversations with Fuse, feasibility is one of the number-one items. So within these options, why, originally, when we were brainstorming how to go about this, we thought we'd go out to the public first for ideas, for all ideas, and we thought it would be more useful to put concepts together that are feasible, just so that there is a realistic expectation that can be met within our budget. But of course, within the five alternatives, you have extremely feasible options of open space to, if it were the permanent structures, that would take a long time for us to, you know, compile all the financing for those projects. It would, the finished, completed project would take longer than, say, the mobile. But that is a focus that we have been having discussions with Fuse about, that each option, whatever we put out there within the five options, must be feasible for the city.
And so my second part of it is about the community meetings. There was two, and we currently have multiple commissions, you know, our Finance Advisory Committee, all the way to our Chief's Council, to our Environmental Commission, Arts and Cultural. I'm not seeing any kind of collaborative effort to reach out to all those groups. All those groups have business owners and community members, and we work really hard on appointing folks in the community across the city. I'd really like to see all of those groups tapped separately than just a community meeting, because not everyone can always make those or get access to the service. Even our BIA, you know, not necessarily a group we govern, but just outreach to these groups and our commissions, our Planning Commission, to really set some time for input. groups and our commissions, our planning commission, to really set some time for input and really build that into the outcomes that, that come before us in February. So I'd like, I'd like to see that really come back to us in February, that they've all been, you know, talked to, and they've all had an opportunity to, to give comment.
So before February, or once the five options are put together?
So if we look back, yeah, if we look back, it looks like, one more slide back, it just shows community meetings, one in person and one virtual and a survey. In addition to that, I'd really like to see all of our commissions and the BIA tapped for input, because those, those are representatives who have different hats on. So the environmental commission is going to look at it with a different lens, rather than, or, and cultural commission, rather than our chief's council, they're all going to look at the, this with their hats on, representing those groups. And I think it's really important for everyone to have that, be given that opportunity.
Just to be clear, so the public outreach would happen after the February meeting? So once you've told us that you can move forward with these five alternatives? So as long as, if that could happen during the public outreach period, that's definitely doable?
They're all, they all have the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will bring this to public comment. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, now would be the time. Welcome back.
Thank you. I like the idea of the open space, because given the storms and the way the wharf has had to be repaired many times, when you say the option for permanent building or permanent businesses on there, I'm thinking, this area doesn't lend itself to permanent. In fact, what's going on in the world, near nuclear catastrophe, who knows what's permanent? But the open space is the one that makes most sense. And I also think of the Aptos Wharf that was removed after all the destruction. You can just see the cement ship structure remains. So that seems to make most sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Any discussion or comments? Any discussion or comments?
No, I just think that, or, yes, and I think the five areas of focus makes sense, that it kind of incorporates everything. And so I appreciate of Fuse bringing that forward, based off of kind of the input we got from the short-term process. And I just look forward to seeing what the community survey comes back with. So I'm happy to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Fuse for outreach planning and design services for the long-term use and development plan for the Capitola Wharf in an amount not to exceed $75,000, subject to city attorney review and approval. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. For the sake of discussion, once we get to the public participation point, plan, I think to Vice Mayor Brooks' point, in addition to, I know it's a lot of different stakeholders and whatnot, but I think it would also be really important that there be individual discussions with the most kind of intensive stakeholders on the wharf, and that would be the Boat and Bait folks and the former Wharf House restaurant owner. I think those two should have, like, one-on-one interviews to discuss their thoughts about the future of the wharf. Thank you. The Venetians? Yeah? Yeah, the Venetian HOA, I think would be a good one, too. All right, is that it? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. We are moving on now to item 8B, McGregor Asphalt Pump Track.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a fun one for you today. All good news. All right, so we are here to talk about that pump track at McGregor Park. As you may recall, this was constructed in 2016, and we discovered some contamination there, specifically arsenic. So the whole thing got all the dirt ripped up, clean dirt put in, put a cap in there, and then we built on top of it. So we are all square now with the county, and we are completely prepared to do additional improvements to the site. Next slide. So this was day one of the pump track. Everyone loved it. There were children. It was great. Next slide. It is very hard to maintain, and this is any kind of earthen pump track anywhere where it rains, because it retains water, the, just even with the best drainage, you get erosion of this sort. So we do close it periodically due to that. Next slide. Luckily, we have a very active pump track community here. I know that you were here during budget time, last go around, and they did this cleanup of the pump track last spring. Next slide. So in the 2425 budget, you all allocated $30,000 for some pump track refurbishment, with the intent of staff going out to seek additional funding to supplement the budget of that project. The intention of that project was to upgrade the earthen track to an asphalt truck. It obviously reduces maintenance, because it doesn't have erosion anymore, or longevity, and then also provides an enhanced riding experience. Most of the new pump tracks in the area, including the one out at Pinto Lake in Watsonville, is also an asphalt pump track. Next slide. These are examples of, the one in Pinto Lakes there on the left, this is an example, I believe, on the East Coast, but these are what they look like. So they're not the prettiest facilities, but they are a lot of fun. Next slide. So we put out an RFP for this project in July 2024, and while we did get some interest from other contractors, we did only get one formal response from American Ramp Company. And they're the ones who did the original pump track that we have out there at McGregor, and also many other pump tracks around the state and around the country. They are under American Ramp Company, which is the proposed, who the contract would be with, but it, it is the same people as Action Sports Construction. So they have extensive experience in developing these types of tracks, so we're very confident in their abilities. Slide. So this was the graphic that was included in their proposal. The green is not turf, it's just to delineate where it is not asphalt. So you have your track, you have your areas that are kind of graded off-track, that make it more fun to ride. And then there on the far right side, where you see kind of a black area, is a proposed wall ride. Next slide. It's a 90-degree prefab wall ride. You get to do that on it, and have the ability to put any kind of branding that is also available for this type of facility. Next slide, please. So staff did go out seeking funding for this project, and the Monty Foundation agreed to a $90,000 donation for this project, which is incredibly exciting, just requesting a 10-year recognition for this donation, which could go on that wall ride in the last slide, or it could go an additional signage on the track, TBD. Next slide. So these kind of projects have a relatively quick turnaround. Obviously, we're getting towards fall, so it may rain, so no promises. But the design phase is relatively quick, and we really expect this to be completed late this year or early next year. Slide. So the total project budget with the allocation in the budget plus the donation is $125 off of what we have budgeted for this project, which we will easily be able to find. Next slide. So with that, the recommended action is on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Jessica. I wish I knew how to do that. My two questions, we had a wonderful nonprofit come by to offer their services to help clean it during, when it was all damaged. They're also just, they just know about all the other pump tracks, or, yeah, or tracks that were created even locally. And I'm curious if you've reached out to them, just on input of what they liked in the other one versus what could be, you know, maybe we can offer something different above and beyond that really cool thing. Have you done that yet?
So we have been actively in touch with them. Since they knew it was budgeted, they were looking for updates of, have you found more money? And luckily, we will say, yes, yes, we did. And so we have been talking to them. There is a design phase in this project that includes some outreach to stakeholders.
And then my second question, and we also have a dog park over there, that we heard from the community that dogs don't like to use. Will this, some of this find help with the upgrades of that, or new turf, or taking away tan bark and putting in something else?
No, unfortunately. I will say that it'll be a whole lot less dusty up there, if that bothers some of the dogs. But I would say the intensity of use, we expect to be around the same, and the noise that you also get from the skate park next door is also, is louder than you would be getting off an asphalt pump track.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions. Okay, we'll bring this now to public comments. Any member of the public like to comment on this item?
This seems like such a hazardous sport. I'm picturing when I came out of my acupunctureist office one day, in comes a mother with her son who'd broken his leg skateboarding on this kind of, I don't know the location, but it seems like this caters to a certain population of young people who like doing this sport. And I don't know what the liability is for the city, but what did you ask something about? It could have been a dog park, I missed hearing that. It seems like there are other park uses that serve more of the public. And I wonder also, what's the comparison of injuries skateboarding on dirt compared to cement? It seems to me it'd be more. This just seems so hazardous to me. I look at it and I go, this looks like, you know, a disaster. Yeah, anyway, it's not something that seems like a good idea for a larger group of members of the community.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Questions? I just have a quick question, I think, to address maybe what other members of the community are wondering as well, which is what is, you know, we already have a pump track there, we already have a skate park, we already have a dog park in that same area. It's all, all co-located in that same park. So what does the city liability look like for the, the pump track and the skate park? I'm assuming since they're already there, this is something we've addressed before, but I'm assuming members of the public might be wondering as well.
I think we would have some immunities for anything that happens.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I'm assuming it's the same as using any public facility? Yeah, okay. Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion, if there's no further comments.
I will make the motion to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with American Ramp Company for McGregor Asphalt Pump Track in the amount not to exceed $120,000. Oh, and we are amending the fiscal year 2425 budget to accept that very generous $90,000 donation.
I'll second that. And, and a thank you to the Monty Family Foundation for that very generous donation. I will be excited to provide their recognition on the wall or sign it or whatever.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our final item, a strategic plan project update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Give me one moment, so that everyone can see the presentation. Okay, like you mentioned, this is going to be a brief strategic plan update. This is an informational item, so there won't be a vote required unless you give significant feedback. But this is more just to keep council in the loop as we bring back a project that we had paused. So a little bit of background, in the fiscal year budget 2324, so not this past one, you did direct staff to develop five, 10, and 15-year strategic goals, and in that budget, allocated $50,000 towards such a project. And in September, wow, a year ago, shocking. In September 2023, council, you know, we discussed the need for this to be a living document, something flexible, and a, a plan that could be adaptable to the future. And then at the end of last year, you approved a $50,000 contract with Barry Dunn. After significant analysis of proposals and interviewing, Barry Dunn was selected by yourselves. And early this year, staff worked with Barry Dunn in bi-weekly meetings. We did all of the internal work, and we're just about to launch the project to the public, I would say, in spring, after developing a stakeholder list, reviewing interview questions, surveys, that kind of work. But in March, it was determined that we should pause the project until this fall. So here we are, in fall 2024, just about to get started again. And I'm really excited about the next phase. So we're just about to enter into the planned engagement for this project, which will coincide with, very exciting, the wharf grand opening celebration at the end of this month, like you said, September 25th. The plan is to have some tabling at that event, which introduces the public to this strategic planning project, and just get a little bit of feedback in person, and also introduce the public to some survey questions. Followed by, on October 1st, there will be an in-person community forum. We're just about to start promoting that, now that council is aware that that will be happening. That'll be in-person here at City Hall, and will be really a lot of back and forth with the community. Council is, is also invited to, to listen and hear what the community has to say at that event, really geared towards members that want to share what they want to see with Capitola. So it's very exciting, along with online surveys, interviewing stakeholders, which includes all of our board and commissioners, which I know is important to council, and also staff. So this is, you know, external community members and those that work here for the city. And then something really fun and exciting that I'm going to show you is called Social Pinpoint, which is an online portal, kind of the most modern version of community outreach and like data collection that we've used. So I'm sure you could imagine that the city manager is excited about that, and so am I. So let me show you an example. I just want you to know, so these are strategic plans that are in process with Barry Dunn, using a pinpoint site, but these are not citywide strategic plans. This is a Parks District plan, and then I have a library, I believe, as well. So just a brief overview, you can tell, these are pictures of that community, these are the community's colors, the logo. So it's, the look and feel is going to be Capitola and not generic, so that's great. I think that will garner more response from the public. And it's really about data collection, like I mentioned. So you can click through to the survey, you can take the survey online. And then also, this, oh boy, okay, oh wait, this one has the board ideas. There's a lot of different functionality that we've chosen, but share your ideas. The idea wall is something that we will have, and as you can see, this is real, people have left these comments per topic that has been selected about what they want to see in their town. So this is just an example. I'm happy to report that ours is going to launch next week, so we're going to be able to start collecting information from the public really soon, which is great. And then I will go back to my slides. So that's most of the planned engagement. And then council, your specific involvement, other than, you know, really being welcome to most of, of these opportunities, is a full-day workshop in mid-November. Thank you for being available for that, where we'll begin to really develop the strategic plan with Barry Dunn's expertise. And then early 2025, a review of the draft plan, and then final adoption to follow once you've been able to give comments. And that really brings me to the end here, unless I'm more than happy to answer questions, and if that's the information you need, we'll just get started next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Chloe. I was wondering if you could send council calendar invites for meetings pre, before ours in November?
Absolutely.
So that at least we can get them on our calendar, and then, I mean, we all won't show up to all of them at the same time, because that would be, right, but. And then in terms of outreach to the community, to let them know, the website looks amazing. in terms of outreach to the community to let them know, I, the website looks amazing. Um, I was just learning about different marketing strategies today, um, and I was curious about getting it like on KSBW, um, you know, so that folks are aware, I, if we're still under budget, if that's something we can do, so that people know, um, that they can, that we're doing this in the community.
Absolutely. I can certainly look into that. Um, do, you know, internal work or before that launch will be, you know, press release about the project, you know, internal and external emails, social media in the, the Capitola Wave newsletter. But I love your idea, and I can definitely look into that, doing more of an actual, an ad.
Yeah, and I, and I, we stressed last time the importance of having it in, um, Spanish translated, um, but also, you know, not everyone's on, I think the outreach was just really important to us. So, um, getting them dropped off or flyers dropped off at different apartment complexes in both English and Spanish and, um, and parks and on all of those types of things. Just really trying to get different, um, getting everyone involved is really important to me. So, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, I think KSBW even has a community calendar.
Great.
That you don't have to pay for an ad. It's just like in there. I don't know how it works, but something to look into.
Thank you.
One of the things that you showed was, um, I think it was the library district had like a your budget feature where it gave people like theoretical dollars that they could put towards certain features that they felt were most important. Are we going to have something like that on ours? Because I like that concept of showing people like we have a limited budget and where would most people put their money if they were
Yes. So I, I also liked the idea. Um, in discussing with Barry Dunn, they indicated that that isn't necessarily the best for such a large strategic plan that kind of is for the whole city. It's not just one kind of aspect. However,
Yeah, that makes sense.
There will be, um, uh, priorities. And so there will be weighing priorities and putting things in order for the public to do. So I do think we will, we will learn a lot in that way. But if that's a concern for you, this hasn't been launched yet, and so we could choose that as an option. I think we're limited to how many different kind of interactive, um, I don't want to say things, but things that we have on the site. So that was what I was told by their team.
That makes sense. I, I, I understand completely. Um, so if, if not the kind of, you know, your $100 that you put on here, I did see there was also just like, what are your budget priorities generally?
Exactly.
And I think that one would be important.
Yes.
I think, you know, it's important to, um, kind of side by side, what are people's priorities for the city? And then what are their budget priorities? Because if they're different, you know, we need to know where, where we should actually be putting money in the future. Because a lot of times items in a strategic plan require budget allocation.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, uh, my last, uh, question or comment, I guess, is, um, I know that the council members were asked to provide additional, uh, input on, on additional stakeholders that might be interviewed, and we were supposed to do that by close of business today, and I sent mine right before the council meeting.
Thank you.
Technically not close of business, it's technically after close of business, but I hope that they will still be considered.
Of course.
Okay. Uh, with that, uh, we will take it to public comment. Hello?
Hi. When you talk about stakeholders, I've been to many meetings. I find often the public doesn't seem to be a stakeholder. And there are the major ones, actually, in reality. As I listen to what you said about portals and, uh, computer, I'm probably the only one in the room who doesn't have a cellphone and doesn't have a computer. When you talk about community outreach, and I taught elementary school, second and third grade for 30 years, I think of person-to-person interaction with different activities, parks, projects, learning math, whatever. And all of this, more and more to computers, is, I think, very destructive of humanity. And often, we're having all this wireless microwave stuff, and I have, um, a trifold I'll leave you with. It's called Mobile Communications, the cause, cause for the global disappearance of the bees. And it's like, oh, about Capitola, the huge cell tower between Bay Porter and Park, and he's always whispering when I'm talking, which I don't consider very polite. Um, I have to avoid going that way because the radiation gives me, I get a terrible headache and, and kind of heart palpitations, which are symptoms. So I'll just read you this, and I wish it were funny, but it's not. For several years, a massive disappearance of bees have been observed worldwide. In Germany, Austria, and Switzerland, for example, about 30% of the bees died during the winter 29, 2010. There's, uh, they call it colony collapse disorder, but none of the factors known to have had any influence here, such as the varroa mite, insecticides, fungicides, or lack of food due to changes in the environment, can provide a satisfactory explanation as to the main cause. All of those are caused as you. For the unusually high decline of the honeybee population, no matter how much all of these factors just mentioned do impact the natural life and functioning bees, the actual reason for the disappearance of the bees is the worldwide proliferation of mobile communications. There's also a document called Bees, Birds, and Mankind: Destroying Nature by Electro Smog, translated from the German. It's by Warren Key. So I'd like to see strategic plans without cell towers.
Thank you.
And here, I'll give you that.
Yes, you can leave that with our court. Thank you. Okay, any further comment on this? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for a further discussion and a vote.
I don't think it needs a vote, but I do.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We don't need a vote. Thank you.
But our speaker does raise a good point about ensuring that there's other ways other than online to offer input. Um, so I, I'm sure the experts will, um, be able to brainstorm with you and, and come up with something like that.
We're excited about the in-person community forum on October 1st as well.
Yeah, um, or even just like paper.
Paper surveys, absolutely.
Thank you.
I was just gonna touch on the fact that, yeah, there's, uh, the September 25th, there will be some outreach and then, uh, in-person and then October 1st as well. Um, and then I, I, going off of what you were talking about with the funding, like dollar amount, I feel like that would be a good choice if we're focusing on a specific project. But like, in for like the grand scheme of things, just kind of keep it more, I mean, it'll have to be pretty broad for such a large budget. But, yeah, um, but that looks really cool, the social pinpoint. So thanks for finding that.
Okay, uh, if there's no further discussion, staff has what you need from us on this item? Okay, great. All right, well, that brings us to, wow, under an hour. That's one of the shortest council meetings I think we've had this year. Um, that brings us to the end of our meeting. So we are, uh, journeying to our next regularly scheduled city council meeting on September 26th at 6:00 PM. Until then, take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Good night.